Melissa, Kathy. Everyone's here. Alrighty. Next thing we'll stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to which is Republican, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Wrong one. Next thing on the agenda. Hold on, I have a computer problem. Does anybody see the agenda?
Yes, President Holland, I'm recommending a modification of the agenda this evening. And with the board's permission, I would like to add an additional action item for the board's consideration to develop a citizens' facility advisory committee to recruit consultants and develop a timeline for the possible construction of new school facilities to address the growing student population. I'm referring to it as the CFAC committee. It can be called anything that the board wishes to call it after this evening. But the citizens' facility advisory committee is a very sound practice to involve individuals who are stakeholders within the community, possibly some are will be staff members. But we think that it's a great way to develop a collaborative effort and an understanding of the challenges the Orting School District faces with a growing student population. And so we will need a motion to add that item to an action item this evening.
Can we get a motion to add that to the approve the consent agenda?
I move that we add the motion to the consent agenda.
To the action item. Can we get a second?
A second.
The first and second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, passed. Thank you. We'll move that to the action item. The next one is discussion. A ways for my computer to load up. So somebody can take it on. Um, hold on. It's coming. Yeah.
Yes, President Holland, members of the board. Tonight, we have two individuals representing the Tarragon Company. Dennis Ratty is here this evening, and he is president of Tarragon. And he is assistant, he is joined by his assistant, Caitlin Carter. So we want to welcome both of you this evening. Will members of the board please introduce yourselves to our guests this evening?
Alright, I'll go first. I'm Stanley Holland, I'm the president of the Orting School Board.
And I'm Terry Tipido. I'm the vice president of the school board.
My name is Melissa Kinsler, board member.
Kathy Madigan, board member.
George Kennerberg, board member.
Alright, Dennis. Dennis and I have had some conversations in the past. Lynn and I visited with him a couple of months ago. And he has, I think, a very powerful presentation this evening. We had, Bonnie and I had an opportunity to take a quick look at it earlier in the week. And we hope that the board enjoys the presentation this evening. Dennis?
Alright, is my mic working there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Tony. And hello, everyone. As Tony mentioned, I'm Dennis Ratty. I'm the president of Tarragon. We're a Seattle-based real estate development company. And I'm really excited to be here tonight talking about our project. It's been a long, a long time in the working. And I look forward to an informative discussion about the project and how it relates to the Orting School District. First, as Tony mentioned, Caitlin Carter is our marketing manager. So the graphics you see here are the product of her work, definitely not mine. And before I get started, I'd also like to thank Tony and Bonnie for all their efforts in kind of getting this started. Or getting us set up for this evening, excuse me. For a quick summary of what I'm going to talk about, and I don't know if you haven't, if you've seen the package already. But we'll offer a quick introduction to Tarragon, kind of who we are, what we've done in the area. Introduction to the Uplands Project. Talked about some history of the project and kind of, you know, when we started from acquiring the land in 2006 to where we are today. A little bit about where we're going and what we assume. And then, in that sense, we'll talk about the phasing. You don't just go do something to this scale overnight. And then finally, we'll kind of bring it all together to kind of the context of how it relates to the Orting School District. So I'm happy to make this as formal or as informal as you'd like. If you have questions along the way, please don't hesitate to ask. Again, I want this to be a more of a discussion, hopefully more of a discussion than just me kind of spouting out a bunch of information. So with that, I think we have plenty of time here. So question, if you want to kind of wait till the end, that's fine with me as well. So with all that being said, about Tarragon. So as I said, Tarragon's a Seattle-based real estate company. We also have an office in Sumner. And we were founded in 1995. So this August, we celebrated 25 years of being in business, which was a major milestone. If you think about the, all the economic events that have happened over the last 25 years that we've managed to keep our doors open and the lights on. We're a fairly unique group in that we, we work on a diverse, diverse product. I should say diverse assets, but that means we do industrial, we do residential, we do retail, we do mixed use. And in this case, you know, we do the single-family master plan communities. Another interesting thing about us is that we have a tendency to hold things or own them long-term. May not be the case with a lot of the Uplands product, but generally speaking, we build and we own it for forever. Some things as long as 25 years. So it makes us relatively unique in the marketplace. Next. To provide some local context, here's a list of projects that we've done in the area. The main apartments and lofts on Main Street in downtown Sumner. Astor Town Homes, which are the townhomes that you see along Highway 410. Renwin Apartments were built out in Bonny Lake several years ago. We also have a new project called Midtown Properties, which is a 50-acre multifamily project that we're working on in Bonny Lake. We're currently working on the second phase of Glacier Run Apartments in the Sunrise community. We also are just closing out the final phase of Sawyer Trail, which is in Frederickson. We developed and owned Sunrise Village up on Meridian and South Hill, and of course, the Uplands Project. For a quick introduction to Uplands. Go ahead. Here's, you can see from the aerial view, it's actually in two sections. The one section, we call it the orphan parcel. It actually isn't part of development at this point in time. In total, it's 320 acres. It's on the east side of Sunrise, which you can see. This is really hard to do because usually I'm used to standing up in front and pointing at stuff. So I keep pointing at the screen like you can tell what I'm pointing at. But you can see how it sits adjacent to Sunrise there. In total, there's a capacity for 1,300 units. The entire property slopes, you know, to the southeast, which in this image is kind of left to right. Right up to kind of the ridge that overlooks the Orting Valley. When it's all said and done, almost all the houses, because the way it will stair-step down, will have views of the valley and Mount Rainier in the distance. For some history, as I said, we acquired the property in 2006. We bought it from the Department of Natural Resources. Spent several years working on a memorandum of understanding, which was really an exercise in ultimately an agreement with Sunrise in Pierce County about how we were going to address the major transportation issues as it relates to the South Hill area. That then extended out to, obviously, then the recession hit and we kind of slowed things down for a while. But in 2016, we commissioned a study that verified that the county had sanitary sewer capacity to accommodate the number of units that were being contemplated. In 2017, we did a planned development district rezone, which effectively was a master plan approval for a total of just under 1,200 units. Spent a couple of years then working. At the time, we didn't have documented access to the property. So we spent a couple of years working through an agreement with Sunrise in Pierce County to confirm how utilities and access would be provided to the property. We'll show some images about what that looks like. And then in April of 2020, we've got our first preliminary P-Plat approval for the first phase of the project, which is up to 374 lots. In June of last year, we began construction activities. We brought in utilities and the first extension access road into the property. And we logged the entire Phase 1 area. I'll talk a little bit more later about kind of what we see in the next 12 months. But go ahead to the next. So for context, I want to show kind of this image of what Uplands looks like relative to Orting. You see we're basically due west, although there's a fairly sizable difference in elevation. But that's where we sit. Next. This is actually, this is the plan that when I said that we had the PDD rezone approval. This is the master plan that was approved. And as I was mentioning, you know, the access points, you can see where Caitlin's cursor is. That's 184th Street. That leg right there off of the colored area is what is the connection that we have to make. What isn't shown on this image is in the upper-left corner where you can see up here Caitlin, up there. We brought 1/30th into the property. So that's the only direct access that is to the property today. Although we'll have 184th constructed. This plan is really more of a planning plan. It's not what you call a master plan community plan. So since we got the approval in April, we've been, you know, studying this exhaustively, really trying to develop a community. And so if you go to the next couple of slides. This is our current plan. This is where, can you blow this up, Caitlin, please? So this is where we've really kind of, you know, started to put life to the project. Again, all of the main components are essentially the same with the access of 184th in the lower-left and 1/30th in the upper-left. And you can see the main infrastructure that comes through, through the site. And then we kind of, we were introducing this, we call it the, you know, Central Park, which is kind of an amenity area in the center, which will have a clubhouse facility, pool. All this stuff is conceptually being studied right now. So nothing is definitive, but really trying to create a center, like the energy of the project kind of make its way into the center of the property. In 2021, you can see the labeling here, it says Phase 1A in the left and 1B. But we really won't get too far into that this year. This year, our efforts will focus on completing the extension of 184th up to the property. And then we'll bring that infrastructure into the property from kind of the south to the north. We'll do mass grading of about 100, roughly 100 acres, which was the Phase 1 area. And then we'll commence plat development in that Phase 1 area likely for about 100 lots. Next. So this was something we put together a while ago, actually, when we met with Tony originally to kind of provide an idea of how this property sits relative to the Orting School District as compared to the Puyallup School District. And you can see that, you know, Puyallup is in the green and Orting is in the, I guess, supposed to be orange shaded area. But you can see the different plats that are either in various stages of design or construction up in that area that sit within the Orting School District.
Dennis, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there any property set aside in the Orting School District that could be utilized as a school site?
Well, that question was, is there any set aside or any that could be used?
I guess that's, yeah, there's two different answers there.
Yes, to my knowledge, there isn't, there's not any property that has been set aside for use by Orting Schools. I can't speak to everybody else's property relative to whether there's property that could be used. That would have to be something that would have to be discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. So in terms of the scale of what is planned. And we actually had another image. This is just focused on kind of the west side, you know, the west ridge, if you will. On the east side, I think you're aware that Tahali has area that's within Orting Schools that accommodate roughly 1,000 units over there. We elected in this to just show what's happening on our side of the valley, so to speak. Uplands, as you heard, contemplates roughly 1,100 homes. South Sunrise, which there's east and west, is just under 1,000 homes. Daybreak, which is actually under construction right now, is 530 homes. And then South Hill Estates, which, yeah, just to the northeast of us is 27 homes. And so for a total of just under 2,600 homes on this side of the valley.
What's the dotted green line?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The dash green line, what's that?
Those are showing future, either existing, the green is a future access. Those are showing travel routes.
Will that be finished before houses are finished?
No, it will not. That is, that's part of Sunrise. And Sunrise, I think their requirement is to build that as they build through. This doesn't show the access, oh yes, it does. It shows the access that runs through La Palma Furs that gets out to Meridian and then to 200th. So red is existing, green is planned. From a delivery timeline perspective, this just relates to us. And again, these are estimates. Actually, I was looking at some information that we'd provided to the school district before. And a couple, more than a couple of years ago, we had originally contemplated bringing units to market this year. But, you know, there was various challenges along the way. But as it looks right now, again, from our standpoint, when we go develop lots, then then a builder comes in and builds the house and then sells the house. So these timelines, while we may be working today, we would project out that our first exposure to bringing students from our project to the Orting School District is in 2023. We put 200 there. I mentioned earlier that we were going to start with the first 100 lots. We're probably also going to be building some townhomes on the property that could be bringing, that could be starting as early as early '22. And then that would then apply to '23. But you can see it's just a gradual, you know, build, you know, that can be accelerated or decelerated. You never know based on, you know, economic times or other factors. But kind of, it really kind of shows that it's over roughly a four or five-year period. We would project to be building out of the entire property. And this is, again, this shows the four different projects that I had mentioned earlier. And obviously, we have ours, our Uplands. And then what we know or assume for the other three projects provides context of the overall kind of growth in the Orting School District. 2021, we show zero. 2022 is, this says 150. We missed the 27 there. 2023 is, again, the big, the big, big jump, if you will, of 450. And then it's pretty consistent for about four years until it starts tailing off as people kind of get through the build-out. Next. And that's what I have. Happy to answer questions, talk through anything?
Well, just as an update, Dennis, I had a recent conversation with Dr. Palm, Superintendent of the Puyallup School District. And of course, you know, we have some similar and very mutual interests in working together to identify issues that will impact the Puyallup School District as well as the Orting School District. So we are ready to schedule a time for his team to meet with the Orting School District team to discuss the intents, the intentions of the Puyallup School District and what they plan to do over the next foreseeable two years. So we have far more questions than we have answers at this time. But we're looking forward to engaging in that conversation with the Puyallup School District. The same is true with the Tahali Development and the Sumner-Bonny Lake School District. I had a brief conversation today with Superintendent of Sumner-Bonny Lake. And she is very interested in the two districts coming together. And again, talking about items of mutual interest and in a very collaborative manner. So just an update for you to know that we are going to be engaging soon with both school districts.
Yeah, and Tony, that's great to hear. And as I, as I had mentioned in our previous conversations, if there's, if there's anything we can do to assist in those discussions, provide information, anything that you can think of, we'd be more than happy to engage or participate at whatever level is appropriate.
Well, thank you. We'll take advantage of that for you.
And maybe for nothing else, to have Caitlin put together great presentations.
That's right. Caitlin, how's done a great job?
I just have one clarification question, and that's, so is Tarragon just Uplands? Or is Tarragon also the other development?
No, we are just Uplands.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought.
And actually, just for context, though, of what's happening, Sunrise on, Sunrise has about 500 units in their area that are platted. I think all of those are in the Puyallup School District. And a good portion of those lots have already been sold to a home builder. So there's homes being built. Daybreak, which is one that's in the Orting School District that butts 200th, was sold to a home builder. And they are under construction. And South Hill Estates is a smaller project that I do not believe is moving forward. They're not moving forward with construction now, but they, I know they're actively marketing it.
So I have a question regarding kind of the road situation. And I'm not going to pretend to be a developer or do you even understand what kind of things go into making a project of this size happen? But knowing that, and you can't see me point at a map anymore than I could see you. But knowing that as you look at Uplands and where it butts up against the Puyallup School District, and then you have Daybreak that's currently under construction along 200th. How is it possible to, that road that's supposed to connect and open up at 186th that's a future road? How difficult is it at this point to change and get a road that would connect the Uplands Development that serves Orting School Districts down in through Daybreak to come out on 200th? Is that even a possibility? I feel like our kids are kind of landlocked and we have no way except for to drive through and past existing Puyallup schools to get our kids to Orting.
Well, even with the construction of the green dotted line, you would still go by the Puyallup schools to get to that point. And in terms of how difficult is it to build the road? From a design and permitting and construction standpoint, it's not, it's not that difficult. It's just a matter of where the, again, I can't speak for Sunrise in terms of what their intent is. I can't go, I couldn't go build a road on their property. They have to dedicate it to the county. And they would have to make the commitment to do that. We all kind of, through the various negotiations, agreements, whatnot, over the last decade, kind of all kind of signed up for different portions. As I mentioned, we did the 1/30th and the 1/84th. And, you know, they have that extension. They actually had to make an extension to get to La Palma Furs that they've done. But it, I mean, it's not cheap, but it can be done. I just, I can't speak to what their intent or desire would be to do that.
I understand that, and I thank you for that. I'm just wondering how, how in the world we get to a place where kids on one side have to go all the way out and then back down around them back and basically a giant oval to get to their school? I don't understand the process, so I'm not going to be into it. It's just a big jumble of how does, how does this happen? But I thank you for that. It's just one of the main concerns I have when I look at Orting students and their transport to school. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the meeting where we talk about the new gondola from the hill to the valley. I do have a serious question.
Zip line, budgetary reasons.
Yeah, zip line. Are any of the homes that you're planning for Uplands, are any of them like 55-plus? Or are they all single-family homes?
It's very likely that some will be 55-plus. We, what, how we've communicated this is that we use that as an example for a diversity of housing types. So we actually have, we have lots that in our concept plan that are designed that would be more oriented, single-story, whatnot, for that demographic. Probably in the 100, 150th max. And then again, the townhomes, again, really trying to kind of put this with a diversity of price points, if you will, and, you know, and age and some oriented more towards families. Most of it, of course, families. Oh, geez. And my office and the lights went off. Towards families and some towards, you know, singles.
Okay. But no hard numbers. Yeah, you said you're still in the concept phase.
Yes, I'm going to try to turn my light, please. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Yes, nothing is concrete, but it would likely be, you know, like I said, no more than 150.
Okay.
Well, any other questions?
No, it's just helpful to have the timeline and and it's a lot of challenges for us to figure out.
Yes, we would like to thank you because this has been a problem coming along for a long time and nobody have addressed it. Now, it's upon us right now. So we'd like to thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. And again, from our perspective, you know, I would, I would enjoy the opportunity to continue working with you and the dialogue and to seek, help, help all of us seek solutions to make this the best possible for everybody.
Thank you.
Very good, Dennis. Lynn and I will be in touch with you very soon. And some of the time for us to talk further in preparation for our meeting with the Puyallup School District.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Caitlin.
Good presentation, Caitlin. Alright, we're back at the meeting here. Next thing on the agenda. Thank you, Bonnie. It's working now. It's got the board annual calendar. Any changes or discussions we need to talk about? Okay, we'll move on to public requests.
That is.
Got a couple.
It's been nice and short and sweet. I'm appreciating that.
Moving quick. Thanks, Bonnie. Hearing any questions? We've got to move on to the first reading of the policies. The first reading, so you will get a second chance to address those, basically just the first reading. If you have any comments or questions, please send them to Bonnie so she can research it and get back to us at a time of any matter. Sorry about the noise in the background. Our next thing is schedule adjustments, rates, fees. Marcy Bannon. uh, schedule adjustments, rates, fees. Marcy Bannon.
Good evening, board. How are you tonight?
Good.
So I have a request that came to me from ordering high school. As you know, you, um, you may be aware that you approve the fee schedule for the school district every summer, which we set for the next year. And those, most of the feeds come from the schools and what they believe they need for the next school year. As we're in an interesting year, ordering high school is now working on starting up athletics fairly soon. And they were talking about the ASB fee. They were feeling that the ASB fee that was approved by the board in June was, or July was a bit too high. And so they wanted, um, they wanted to bring forth to you a request to reduce that fee for this school year only. They came up with an, with the amount of $28 as it is 70% of the original amount of $40, because they are going to be able to participate in about 70% of the seasons. They are the only ones that have come to us so far with a rate request change. Cause middle school does not believe they will be charging, they will be having athletics to charge ASB fees. So this is ordering high school thing only at this current time. Any questions for me on it?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I wasn't with my brain enough to ask ahead of time. So if you don't have the answer, this isn't, this isn't meant to be a whoosh surprise. But just wondering with the ASB cards, I don't have a problem with that at all. But wondering, have kids already started paying for their ASB cards?
No.
Okay, good. So it wouldn't be an issue where we would have to start refunding?
No, there has been no ASB card payments this school year at all.
Okay, great. That's it.
What's the budgetary impact of having the no fees?
So right now, the no fees at the middle school, their ASB fund balance can sufficiently handle. No fees, they aren't having sports, they aren't having things costing things, so it's not hurting. The reduction at the high school. We don't know the whole implication, but it is all revolved around ASB and what students choose to do with the funds.
Okay, but I would want to know what the current state of the ASB balance is? What the, what the options of what they're looking to spend their money on, basically what their needs are. Because I understand the, the request to limit the ASB fees. I would then want to know why? I mean, one of the, one of the major things an ASB card is good for is getting you into games. Probably not even going to happen very much this year. So.
No, actually, so I don't know that there's going to be very many games. Right now, their only requirement of purchasing an ASB card at the high school is if you participate in athletics. No one else has to, has to buy one for any reason. It's just an athletics thing. Athletics, for athletics, the money is used to pay for officials, which we will have. It's used to help pay for supplies within ASB. And they believe that this will be sufficient to cover with their fund balance. That's why they came up with the amount. The allocations per sport maybe decrease this year, possibly that they'll delay, uh, delay some expenditures. They have uniform allowances that are go to each sport. They have a schedule of which teams get which allocation of uniforms on a yearly basis. And that obviously needs some modification at this point for the situation we're in.
Yeah, personally, I would like to see what the proposed lives, what the impact and the need is. It's hard for me to, to say yea or nay on a fee at all if I don't see what the demand or what the, what the cost estimate for what it's going to cost our, our district to, to support our modified schedule.
But Marcy, correct me if I'm wrong.
Are you asking for ASB? Go ahead, Melissa.
Oh no, I'm sorry. You're kind of freezing in and out. I didn't know you were speaking. I'm sorry.
Let me switch. Am I still freezing? Cause my computer does that if I, okay, one sec. If you can hear me, I'm going to switch over to my hotspot that Mr. Hunbin so nicely gave me for situations like this. So give me a minute.
Matt saves the day again.
I do my best.
While Marcy is switching over, if I recall from the last set of financials, the ASB fund is sitting on a pretty solid balance. And with the compressed, you know, compressed season and an ASB card that would only apply to, you know, these last, this last semester of school, I mean, it makes sense to me to reduce the cost of the card.
All right, it makes sense to me to reduce it as well. I just don't know, leaving it as high as 28 makes sense.
Okay, I think I'm back. I'm hoping I'm not blotchy anymore. Can you hear me? I'm not blotchy anymore. Okay, so George, I don't know if this is what you're asking, but are you asking ASB to reconfigure their budget for their year? That's already been adopted by the board to be able to show you where their revenues and expenditures will be for the remainder of this year through June?
I, I would, I mean, I would have thought that would have come with the request. You know, here's what we have, here's what we need, and this is why we want the, the amount changed.
I, well, I can tell you that the high school ASB has met and they decide, they voted on this requested reduction. They had a long conversation within their ASB. There's, um, their executive team about this and decided that their ASB could handle the reduction in it. I did not request that information because they told me their ASB, which a student ran, would be able to absorb this for this year. Cause already the costs have gone down for ASB this year. Homecoming is, did not happen. Things in the fall did not happen. The district wide day for the high school for seniors, that may not happen. There's, there's costs that are just not going to happen that were included in the regular, original budget. So I can request that for you, George. That's not a problem. But no, I did not request it because we had those discussions and they, I believe they took those into account when we had those discussions.
Um, I really admire that they were so responsible to look at how this plays out in the current times. That's very adult-like of them.
Isn't there any more question? We need a motion to approve.
I, I have one question about the 3520, the procedure. And, and it's just as when they're talking about the, the fines and waiving them. And they talked about, you know, homeless, homeless kids are being held responsible. I just wanted to understand, does that include foster children also or just homeless?
McKenney Vento students do not pay any fee at all. If they have any, sorry, McKenney Ventos don't pay any fines. Chris is a foster kid also, I believe so, but Chris knows better than I do.
That's what I thought. He was on.
Yes, I'm still on. I just didn't have my microphone on. And so, yeah, it's, it's, it's foster children and that's designed to, to help support access to all of our kids.
Yes, yes. I just didn't want them to be held responsible when they didn't hold the purse, purse strings. Thanks.
Yes, those students would not be asked, if they're participating in sports, they would not be asked to pay for an ASB card.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? If hearing none, can we get a motion to approve the 2021 fee schedule?
I will motion to approve the 2021 fee schedule reduction to the cost of ordering high schools ASB cards.
I'll second it.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you had something, you had something to say, Chris? I saw your mouth moving.
Um, my mouth is moving. Bonnie knows my problem. So, okay.
Bonnie knows all our problems.
Next thing, we board comments, any comments from the boards?
Chris has been working really late a lot.
Wait, 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 stop, stop. We, sorry.
We do have a little shit.
We have, yeah. Yeah, go back, go back. Yeah, we have one, uh, the modified agenda.
Yes, members of the board, uh, this evening, I'm seeking your approval to engage in the planning that everyone has been talking about the future of the ordering school district and the possibility of running a bond issue someday to, to build new schools and to modernize existing facilities. In an effort to achieve that goal, uh, it's absolutely incumbent that, and the board realizes this, that the community and staff need to be engaged in a conversation and to become informed about all the elements of the financing of such an endeavor and the location of new schools. And so I'm asking the board to commission and to allow the superintendent and his team to develop a citizens, facilities advisory committee membership plan with the board's direct involvement in selecting and nominating individuals to serve on that committee. For us to recruit possible consultants to advise the citizens, citizens committee and board and to develop a timeline for it to conduct its work and recommendation to the board of directors. So I present to you under, uh, for board consideration to be allowed to come back at a future date with a plan to address the aforementioned elements.
Can we get a motion to approve that?
I would like to move to authorize the superintendent to develop a plan for final board approval to coordinate the selection of community and staff members to serve on the OSD capital facilities advisory committee to recruit and identify consultants and to provide pertinent information to the C, S, CFAC committee. Project the potential financial costs associated with professional services of consultants and the projected timeline of the SC, FAC's recommendation to the OSD board of directors. That was the longest motion ever.
And if you stay with that acronym for that committee, it's, we'll refer to it as CFAC.
I, I tripped up on that. I was part of another group and ended up calling the, it's not the Seacocker. I, I don't know why we called him that, but that's what I kept trying to say. So I apologize for tripping up on that.
Can we get a second?
Motion.
With first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass. All right. Thank you. Now we're on board comments. Hey, hey, I just want to comment, George, I know you have some concern about the ASB. Could you get those questions to Bonnie so Bonnie can get those answers for you?
Yep.
I would appreciate it.
I have a question for Bonnie. Just a quick one, the, uh, the board agenda out on board docs is going to be modified to reflect the agenda item that we just voted on, right?
Yes, if you refresh right now, you'll see that it is there.
All right.
Yeah, she sent us a text. Any more, any more comments for the board?
I just want to say, Tony, thank you for acting so quickly on that. Um, I really appreciate that. And Chris, thanks for all your late nights lately. I can see when your car leaves, you know.
Oh no, people are watching me.
You're, you're, you're just across the street, you know.
I know.
You've been putting in a lot of late nights.
Well, it's, it's actually, I really enjoy my job, so thank you.
Well, good.
Well, I, I want to comment, I'm looking forward for Monday when we start bringing back kids back to school.
Oh, that's going to be pretty exciting.
Yes, it's going to be very exciting.
You can imagine how the kids will be on Sunday night. Oh my. Mothers and fathers will have a tough time putting them to bed.
Definitely, definitely.
Yesterday Nora picked out her outfit to wear on Monday. She's already bought it.
Now Steve, if I had a pretty good girl in the district, I'd be giving donuts Monday morning for breakfast.
Lots and lots of sugar.
Lots and lots of donuts.
The videos for OPS and PTR turned out really cute.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, I kept laughing. Cliff is hilarious.
I'm looking forward for Monday.
I know costume.
We might, we might put you to work though.
That's fine. I will, I will work. I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, we might, we might be directing the students, you know, to various doors and entrances and exits and such. They'll need your help.
That's right. Put me, put my orange vest on. I'm ready.
I'm planning on coming to Stanley. What school are you going to be at?
Well, I'm going to be at, at Tomagan, you know, granddaughter.
Okay, then I'll go to OPS.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm going to go, I want to go to Tarm again, but at the end of the session. Because I, um, if my grandson sees me, he's, he's going to think it's time to go home. So I need to be there at the end of the morning session.
Oh, that's fine. I'll be gone by the end though.
Okay. And then I, I told Nora I would wave to her as she got on the bus.
Okay, take a lot of pictures. Any other comments for the board?
Um, no comments, but I won't be able to be there to see all this. So I hope that, um, Tony, maybe that there's a plan to have Holly out there taking district pictures and some videos. I would love to.
Yeah, I think, uh, Holly's self-directed, she's probably already got a tone in place, but you know, I will talk.
I feel like I'm missing out on all this excitement for the kids.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we're going to join the meeting at 6:48. You guys have a good night.
All right. Good night, everyone.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.